Chambers.
That construction is.
It is a quiet commission meeting. All right. Are we ready in the back there, too? Yep, all right. Good afternoon. This is Commission Vice President Ryan Calkins reconvening the regular meeting of January 28, 2025. The time is 12:02 PM. We're meeting in person today at the S E A Conference Center and virtually on Microsoft Teams. Clerk Hart, please call the role of all commissioners in attendance.
Thank you. Commissioner Calkins.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
A meeting present?
Thank you. We do have a quorum established.
Great. A couple of housekeeping items.
President as well.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, Commissioner Fellman.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Are you able?
We can hear you, Commissioner Fellman. Okay. Just a couple of housekeeping items. For everyone in the meeting room, please turn your cellphone to silence. Good reminder for me, too. Please mute your speakers when not actively speaking or presenting on Teams. Please keep your cameras off unless you are a commissioner or a member of staff participating virtually and are actively addressing the commission. Members of the public addressing the commission during public comment may turn on their cameras when their name is called to speak and will turn them back off again at the conclusion of their remarks. For anyone at the dais, please turn off computer speakers and silence your devices. Please also remember to address your request to speak through the chair and wait to speak until you have been recognized. You'll turn your microphones on and off as needed. All of the items noted here will ensure a smoother meeting. Thank you very much. All votes today will be taken by the roll call method or by general consent, so it is clear for anyone participating virtually how votes are cast. Commissioners will say aye or nay when their name is called. We are meeting on the ancestral lands and waters of the Coast Salish people with whom we share a commitment to steward these natural resources for future generations. This meeting is being digitally recorded and may be viewed or heard at any time on the port's website and may be rebroadcast by King County Television. Please stand or join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. The first item of business today is approval of the agenda. As a reminder, if a commissioner wishes to make a general comment for or against an item on the consent agenda, it is not necessary to pull the item from the consent agenda. Rather, a commissioner may offer general supporting or opposing comments later in this meeting, once we get to that part of the agenda. However, it is appropriate at this time if a commissioner wants to ask questions of staff or wishes to have a dialogue on the consent agenda item to request the item be pulled for separate discussion. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda or any motions to rearrange the orders of the day? Seeing and hearing none. Commissioners, the question is now on approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some of.
Second.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any objection to approval of the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Next on our agenda is the Executive Director's Report. Executive Director Metrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President Calkins. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to start by acknowledging that tomorrow marks the beginning of the new Lunar New Year, one of the most important festivals in many Asian countries, including Vietnam, China, Korea, and of course, communities here in the United States. The airport's Lunar New Year celebrations are beloved by passengers, employees, and tenants. This year, the airport and its dining and retail partners will celebrate the Lunar New Year from February 5th to the 10th. The Maqfi Lion Dancers, who are always a highlight, will perform on February 6, spreading good fortune throughout the airport. Thank you to everyone at the Aviation Division and in external relations involved in those celebrations. On a more somber note, I also want to note that yesterday was Holocaust Remembrance Day. Holocaust Remembrance Day, known as Yom HaShoa, is the Jewish community's day to recognize the systematic, state-sponsored persecution and murder of 6 million Jews by the Nazi regime and its allies and collaborators during World War II. I'm proud of the order passed by the commission two years ago adopting the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's working definition of antisemitism for the port to serve as a tool to identify and combat antisemitism. It can be difficult to imagine such atrocities taking place while the rest of the world stood by, but as an important reminder of why the port has committed to anti-racism as one of its values, it is not enough to refrain from committing acts of hate, but also we must all work to combat oppression and prejudice. Commissioners, I have three other updates to share before turning to today's meeting. Later today, I'm heading to Vancouver, British Columbia for the second-ever Pacific Northwest Cruise Symposium. The Port of Seattle is honored last year to sponsor the inaugural symposium hosted by Cruise Line's International Association, held at the Bell Harbor Conference Center. This symposium is a valuable gathering of representatives of ports of call, home ports, cruise lines, CLIA, First Nation and Indigenous leaders and businesses, and other businesses that make cruise possible and covers many important topics, including increasing business opportunities to local suppliers, responsible tourism, and our shared environmental sustainability goals. These relationships are more important than ever and are a key strategy for maintaining momentum on our most ambitious initiatives. My second update is closer to home. As you know, despite achieving a hard-fought compromise on maritime and industrial land policy with the Seattle Mayor's Office and the City Council in 2023, we are once again facing a challenge to rezone industrial land in favor of residential housing. We continue working with our broad coalition of labor unions and industry representatives who know all too well the challenges we already face in maintaining a safe, efficient, and competitive port in our urban environment. Our focus today is to stop this current legislation to urge the city of Seattle to embrace a more forward-looking strategy for maximizing jobs and economic opportunity in Soto, which complements our plan to create a port for the future. Lastly, as a part of our overall efforts to recognize the hard work of our staff, non-represented employees, we'll see a 3.6% cost of living adjustment reflected in their February 14 paychecks. This increase is in addition to the pay-for-performance increases that are being finalized now. We appreciate the hard work of all of our port staff, and we understand the impact of inflation on the cost of living here in the Seattle region. This adjustment, combined with additional pay-for-performance increases in the entire total awards benefits package, makes the port a competitive employer for non-represented employees. And so this approach to compensation is key to our recruitment and retention efforts. Moving to today's meeting, I want to highlight a few items on our agenda. Item 8D on our consent agenda is a construction contract that will enable timely and efficient maintenance dredging at key port terminals, ensuring safe berthing and uninterrupted operations for deep draft vessels. This action will help us keep us competitive. Expenditures against this contract will be authorized by the commission separately through individual construction requests in the future. Item 8H is related to improvement to the North Employee Parking Lot, or NEPL. This time last year, you authorized design for Phase III of our North Employee Parking Lot Improvement Project. Originally built 25 years ago, the NEPL supports 24/7 operations for over 11,000 monthly permit holders, including airline TSA, tenant, and service provider personnel. Over time, the facility has experienced significant infrastructure degradation. Phases I and II are now complete, including infrastructure updates to bus shelters, electrical feeders, retaining walls, and signage. With this request, we aim to fund Phase III, which focuses on pavement rehabilitation, replacing storm drainage channels, and a water main, and updating banner signage. Looking ahead, the Aviation Division is exploring potential Phase IV opportunities to expand electric vehicle charging infrastructure, supporting S E A's broader sustainability goals. We recommend approval of this funding request to ensure that the NEPL continues to reliably support airport operations while advancing the port's strategic priorities. On our business agenda, we have actions related to tourism and our S E A Moves Transportation Management Association. Under Presentation and Staff Reports, you'll hear about our proposed 2025 federal legislative agenda. Since the change of the presidential administration's last week, staff have been hard at work analyzing and assessing the impacts of dozens of executive orders signed by President Trump. In addition, I'd like to acknowledge the announcement that we received last night and further clarified this morning that federal grants are being placed on hold until further review against the Trump administration's priorities. We're working with our federal and industry partners to better understand this new direction and how the shifting landscape may impact our projects moving forward. This will be an important and ongoing discussion. I want to thank the staff across the divisions and departments for engaging so closely and so quickly and continuing to advance our critical work, and I thank the commission for your ongoing support in these efforts. Commissioners, this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve, Executive Director Metrick, for that report. Any comments on that? All right. We are now at committee reports. Erica Chung, Strategic Advisor, will provide the report.
Good afternoon, Vice President Calkins, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick. I have three committee reports for you today. On January 21, Commissioners Cho and Calkins convened the Sustainability, Environment, and Climate Committee, where they were briefed on the accomplishment of the committee for 2024, and approved the work plan for 2025 with the addition of Pusan Green Quarter and Fuel Summit topics. The committee then discussed and supported the idea of alternating years for the Sustainable Century Awards, as recommended by staff. On January 21, Commissioners Fellman and Cho convened the Aviation Committee. Commissioners received an update on S E A's preparations in advance of the 2026 FIFA World Cup, the most-watched and attended sports event in the world. 750,000 people are anticipated to come to Seattle in June and July, in June and July of 2026, to attend one of the six matches that will be held in Seattle or just to participate in the festivities. Commissioners mentioned their hope that the World Cup's time in Seattle can be the catalyst to initiate legacy projects and programs that will remain in place well after the United States wins the final match in New Jersey on July 19, 2026. Commissioners also approved the 2025 Aviation Committee Work Plan. Commissioners both expressed a desire to add discussion of S E A's carbon offset partners to the work plan. On January 22, the High Line Forum met with Des Moines Councilmember Matt Mahoney presiding, where they received state and federal legislative updates and approved a proposal to share community co-chair responsibility for 2025 with Des Moines Councilmember Matt Mahoney and Toquilla City Councilmember Armin Papayan. The Forum also received an update on the South King County Community Impact Fund from Port External Relations Senior Manager, Community Engagement, A.J. McClure, noting the additional funding and expansion of the geographic area. Representative from the High Line School District, High Line College, Toquilla, CTAC, Federal Way, Des Moines, Buren, and the Port of Seattle shared their 2025 state legislative priorities for the organization. Nearly all spoke to the funding needs to meet local needs. Then Port State Government Relations Manager, John Flanagan, spoke to the Start State Legislative Agenda for 2025. The Forum received an update from Washington's Congressional Delegation staff and what their offices are focusing on. Megan Utume from Senator Patty Murray's office spoke about immigration issues, funding secure for the King County Metro Rapid Ride Line, and support of community-focused aviation legislation. Shirov Vidula Pauli from Congressman Adam Smith's office spoke to reintroducing the Aviation Noise and Emissions Mitigation Act and the Aviation Impacted Communities Act. And Merrill Trumbauer from Congresswoman Jaya Paul's office spoke to her committee assignments, her support of Congressman Smith aviation bills, and a focus on pro-worker and pro-consumer legislation. Then Aviation Managing Director Lanslitt provided an update on the full Start Meeting from December 18. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erica. Any questions on committee reports, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll now continue on in our agenda to the public comment portion of our meeting. The Port Commission welcomes public comment as an important part of the public process. Comments are received and considered by the commission in its deliberations. Before we take public comment, let's review our rules for in-person and virtual public comment. Clerk Hart, can you please play the recorded rules?
Thank you.
The Port of Seattle Commission welcomes you to our meeting today. As noted, public comment is an important part of the public process, and the Port of Seattle Commission thanks you for joining us. Before proceeding, we will overview the rules governing public comment for your general information. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, unless otherwise revised by the presiding officer for the purposes of meeting efficiency, and the speaker shall keep their remarks within the allotted time provided. A timer will appear on the screen, and a buzzer will sound at the end of the speaker's comment period. The commission accepts comments on items appearing on its agenda and items related to the conduct of port business. Presiding officer will ask speakers to limit their comments to these topics. This rule applies to both introductory and concluding remarks. Disruptions of commission public meetings are prohibited. General disruptions include, but are not limited to, the following: speaking before being recognized by the presiding officer; holding or placing banners and signs in the meeting room in a way that endangers others or obstructs the flow of people or view of others at the meeting; intentionally disrupting, disturbing, or otherwise impeding attendance or participation at a meeting; refusing to follow the direction of the presiding officer or security personnel; attempting to use the comment time for purposeful delay without conveying a discernible message; using the comment period to assist in a campaign for election of any person to any office, or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition, except when dressing action being taken by the commission on a ballot proposition appearing on its agenda; directing public comments to the audience; engaging in abusive or harassing behavior, including but not limited to derogatory remarks based on age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, religion, disability, pregnancy, sex, gender, sexual orientation, transgender status, marital status, or any other category protected by law; the use of obscene or profane language and gestures, assaults or other threatening behavior, and sexual misconduct or sexual harassment. For safety purposes, individuals are asked not to physically approach commissioners or staff at the meeting table during the meeting. Individuals may provide written public comment before or after the meeting, and in addition, speakers may offer written materials to the commission clerk for distribution during their testimony to the commission. A detailed list of the public comment rules is available through the commission clerk. If a meeting is disrupted by an individual in attendance in the meeting room or by an individual providing public comment in person or virtually, the port will impose progressive consequences that may result in exclusion from future meetings. Written materials provided to the clerk will be included in today's meeting record. The clerk has a list of those prepared to speak. When your name is called, please come to the testimony table, or unmute yourself if joining virtually. Repeat your name for the record and state your topic related to an item on the agenda or related to the conduct of port business. For those joining virtually, when you have concluded your remarks, please turn off your camera and mute your microphone. Our public comment period will now commence. Thank you again for joining us today.
Okay, and for public comment, I'm going to call the speakers, one from the room, one from virtual, and we're going to start with Jonison Tracy.
Give me just a moment to get our timer up here.
And forgive me if I butcher the pronunciation for anyone.
You did great. It's been butchered worse.
Reminder to state your name and the topic you're going to speak to.
My name is Tracy Jonison. I'm here to talk about staffing shortages at CTAC and the difficulty we're having with the gaining qualified personnel.
Sorry, just a moment here. Thank you. For some reason, my computer isn't able to share, so Deputy Clerk Payne will do that today.
Are you ready?
Whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Forgive me, I'm not a public speaker, so.
Me neither.
Be reading. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Jonison. I'm a 20-year-plus port employee represented by the operating engineers. My union has been negotiating a contract for two years and have been working without a contract since June of 2023. 117 of your employees have not seen a wage increase since June of 2022. This last Friday, 95% of our representative members voted on a two-year contract that would expire in June of this year. An overwhelming 70% voted down this contract and authorized the union president to call a strike. This vote is unprecedented and highlights a growing discord in your essential workforce. For over a decade, labor has warned of the exodus of skilled labor at CTAC. These warnings fell on reluctant and deaf ears. During the last contract negotiation, three unions sat in front of this very commission and highlighted the challenge organized labor was having, just coming to common consensus of current and future labor challenges. During this decade, CTAC has grown with new facilities where added infrastructure was added to be maintained. While the airport grew, hiring languished, and seasoned employees moved on to other employment opportunities and retirement. We express our concerns of the brain drain and critical roles steadily leaving. These seasoned professionals were unable to impart decades of knowledge. There is still no appetite for a succession plan in this organization. On Friday, we came full circle. The operating engineers have had a rolling vacancy rate of 16 to 25 FTE positions. In the next five years, over 50% of this workforce will be eligible to retire. The recruitment process is not keeping up. Our injury experience rate is so great that in three-year period, almost 100% of your conveyor shop workforce will have an OSHA recordable.
Okay, can you wrap up, Mr. Jonison?
Yep. In response to these labor challenges, the port has contracted out traditional maintenance at four times the in-house labor rates, less-than-entry-level requirements, restructured shifts, shops, and job assignments, and a refusal to acknowledge a $30,000 to $50,000 total package wage discrepancy of like-and-kind work and job duties provided by other unions at the seaport. Your essential workers are tired, injured, and continue to be unheard. In this process, we are excluded from the port's retention and compensation philosophy. We are your employees, coworkers, partners, and we simply be asked to be treated as such.
Thank you. And a reminder, folks, you can always submit written comments as well. We read all of those, too. So, thank you, Mr. Jonison, for your remarks.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Virtually, Stephanie Byington.
Hello. Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Byington, and I'm the Chief Marketing Officer at Visit Seattle. I'm here today to talk about the visitor economy and to ask for your support in growing it. The visitor economy is critical to our community, for the revenue and tax dollars, the jobs it creates, the infrastructure legacy it generates, and the support of our vibrant small business community. While we have seen record-setting seasons for crews and new air routes launching, it's important to note that overall our visitation is not recovered to pre-pandemic levels, and our international markets are those that lag the most. International travelers are crucial as they stay longer and spend more than domestic visitors. They also have a higher propensity to seek out authentic experiences, explore neighborhoods, and venture beyond the gateway. Competition for these international travelers is fierce, and we're often outspent by competing markets who are vying for this lucrative traveler. In order to build a visitor economy, our partnership with the Port of Seattle and Washington State Tourism is critical as we compete against cities, regions, and states with much larger budgets. Additionally, we face other hurdles in growing international visitation, including inconsistent and delayed visa processing and lagging airlift and sentiment from China, which was once our largest overseas market. While there are aspects of this challenge that we can't control, one thing that we can is by being present where our target markets are via international marketing meant to drive demand for our region. We must continue to consistently and effectively market our region, focus on building awareness, education, and relationships with the travel trade in key markets. We're best served by working on this challenge together in order to leverage our collective investments and know-how. We ask you to support the port's continued investment with State of Washington Tourism and international marketing, and we're proud to be your partner in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byington. Back in the room, I'm going to ask Kristy Garrard to come forth.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristy Garrard, and I'm the Executive Director for Visit Issaquah, an emerging destination in Washington State. I'm here today to express my support of the strategic collaboration agreement allowing the port to partner with State of Washington Tourism on tourism marketing and management work that generates increased visitor spending throughout our region by empowering responsible tourism promotion strategies internationally. Since 2022, over $120,000 in grant funding from State of Washington Tourism has allowed this emerging destination. this emerging destination to expand our visual imagery for marketing portfolio, fund our community-based destination stewardship strategic plan initiative, and is supporting our entrance into the travel trade industry. A recent professional analysis of our business community validated that Issaquah's greatest opportunity for economic growth is developing tourism, outdoor recreation, and the creative economies. Please authorize this agreement with State of Washington Tourism for $1.5 million over three years, in addition to the competition waiver, which will benefit organizations like Visit Issaquah while representing King County as a world-class destination that it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Virtually, I'm going to ask Adam Akompara, or Akompara.
That's fine, thank you. Hello, Commissioners, Commissioner Metrick and Chair. My name is Adam Akompara, I'm the Executive Director at Woodinville Wine Country, speaking in support of the international agreement with State of Washington Tourism. My organization, which represents over 130 wineries, breweries, breweries, hotels, and restaurants, honestly would not be where it is without the international program support from State of Washington Tourism and support from the Port of Seattle. It takes time to develop international tour products, but in the last three years, we've created an impressive pipeline of business that has benefited small businesses in my community. State of Washington Tourism has made it possible for us to promote our destination in international travel trade shows, host international familiarization tours, participate in co-op data programs, and promotions. Further, we've benefited from State of Washington Tourism grants that have helped us develop data-driven strategies for engaging new customers for the wineries and hospitality partners in our region. The funding has also allowed us to develop regional content centered around Woodinville's wine industry but overlapping with neighboring cities like Bothell and Kirkland, driving visitors into our region and contributing to our collective economic prosperity. Small communities like Woodinville depend upon a strong state destination to develop national and international customers. Without their support, our marketing efforts would extend to just visitors mainly in the future southern region. And while the tourism industry is working on greater sustainable state funding, we depend upon resources created through the Port of Seattle and the State of Washington Tourism agreement. Just wanted to again state our full support of the agreement. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you. All right, in the room, I'm going to ask Marsha Massey to come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Executive Director Metrick. My name is Marsha Massey, I'm the Executive Director for the Olympic Peninsula Visitor Bureau located in Port Angeles, Washington. I'm speaking today in enthusiastic support of the Port of Seattle's agreement with the State of Washington Tourism for international tourism development. As a previous state tourism director, I can attest firsthand to the importance of a strong partnership between the state tourism's leading marketing agency, its major gateway city, and its gateway airport. It's critical, especially in the international markets, that this representation is of one voice. Rural areas like the Olympic Peninsula benefit significantly from visitors to and through the Seattle Gateway. I would estimate that 10 to 15% of our business comes from international markets. But without the marketing programs led by the State of Washington Tourism and supported by the Port of Seattle, we would have absolutely no visibility to trade or consumers in the key markets such as the UK, Germany, France, South Korea, and Japan, among others. We are a community of small businesses. We have to work together collaboratively. We depend on this partnership between the State of Washington Tourism and the Port of Seattle for statewide destination branding in overseas markets, for in-country representation, for connecting the state and regional destinations like ourselves to tour operators, travel suppliers, and valuable international media, who in turn help drive business back to our region, directly benefiting our various businesses. The State of Washington Tourism, with support from partners such as the Port of Seattle, has rebuilt an effective statewide destination marketing program, one that is strongly supported by the industry. Please continue to support our statewide tourism industry's efforts by approving the agreement before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Next up, we have Brad Jones online.
Good greetings, thank you, Vice President and Commissioners and Executive Director. Thanks for your time. I'm Brad Jones, Executive Director at Visit Bellevue. I'm speaking in support of the Port of Seattle's agreement with the State of Washington Tourism for international tourism development as well. Thank you for allowing us to submit a letter, along with other 19 other DMOs, to you that should be in your meeting packet. Regional destination marketing and management organizations like Visit Bellevue depend upon the State of Washington Tourism as our statewide destination. It really provides essential international branding and awareness, destination assets for us to use, working connections with Brand USA, and leading tour operators and travel suppliers. That vital role allows regional DMOs to partner in international markets and drive business back to our respective communities, directly benefiting businesses, including many small and micro businesses throughout our region. Commissioners, I just want to be sure that you understand the trust and confidence that the State of Washington Tourism has established with the statewide tourism industry. They've rebuilt an impactful program with very few resources that is counted on by many of us DMOs, as well as communities and businesses across the state. We are 100% behind their plans for a sustainable funding model, and in fact, will be at the table. However, this near-term international agreement is critical to statewide success, while we're working hard to solidify that sustainable model. Please support our statewide tourism industry by approving this agreement. Thanks for your service, your time, and consideration.
Thank you, Brad. In the room, I'm going to ask Matt Bentoza to come up.
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Bentoza, Vice President of the International Longshore Warehouse Union Local 19 in Seattle. Good afternoon, Executive Director and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak. One thing I want to point out first of all is that wasn't mentioned is January is also Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and that hasn't been mentioned, but I wanted to point that out. I'd also like to thank the Port of Seattle and your position and the importance of maintaining the industrial lands and preserving that. Those jobs in that area provide long-term living wage jobs in and around the greater Seattle area and across the country. Lastly, I rise in support of Item 8F on the consent agenda. That is the approval of the ILW Local 9's most recent agreement. Both the port and the union worked hard to get to this point, and I want to thank both entities for their efforts, and I ask the Commission to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thanks to this Commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am Tyler Gosnell, the Managing Director of International Inbound Travel at the U.S. Travel Association, and this is in regards to the International Tourism Marketing Initiative put forth in the agenda today. The U.S. Travel Association urges the Port of Seattle Commission to approve the Continued International Tourism Marketing Agreement between the Port and the State of Washington Tourism. A strong state office of tourism is crucial to achieving sustained economic growth that benefits local communities long term. In 2023, visitors to Washington State spent $23.9 billion, contributing $3.3 billion in state and local tax revenue, and supporting more than 230,000 jobs. While international visitors accounted for just 2.5% of total visitor volume, they generated 10% of total visitor spending. In addition to economic benefits, this agreement provides a foundation to support other port priorities, including responsible, inclusive, and equitable tourism practices. Not approving this agreement could potentially lead to a loss of economic opportunities and a setback in efforts to promote responsible tourism. Washington State is a premier destination for international visitors, but tourism does not simply happen. In today's fiercely competitive global tourism market, the need for targeted marketing strategies is vital. According to a tourism economic study, every $1 invested in tourism promotion by Washington State has the potential to generate $29 in economic impact. This impressive return on investment plays a vital role in fostering economic resilience and ensuring long-term benefits for the region. The agreement between the port and the State of Washington Tourism represents a proven path to increase visitor spend, support for local businesses, and an improved quality of life for residents. The U.S. Travel Association encourages the Port Commission to support sustained tourism marketing that propels Washington forward. Thank you again to this Commission for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Tyler. We have two remaining testimonies from folks in the room. First, we're going to go to, it's a Tony Cost here, Jimmy and Dan, but I'm going to have Jimmy go first. Jimmy Limerick.
Executive Director of Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jimmy Limerick, I'm the President of the ILW Local 9, which represents aviation operations workers and aviation security, and I'm here to support a yes vote for the agenda Item 8F, which is the contract that the Port of Seattle and the ILW Local 9 negotiated for. We feel it's a historic contract. I'd like to recognize Terry Hislop, my Vice President, Tyler Gawka, my Business Agent, Al Jackson, and Tom Martin from Aviation Operations, and really importantly, Harold Uglis from Local 19. These were my partners in negotiating this contract, so we were very glad to have them, and also the support of Local 19 and the ILWU. The port also did a good job. We had a good negotiation, a long one, but a good one, so I'd really like to thank Spruce Metzger and his team for making sure that we were able to get this negotiations done. Local 9 represents about 175 aviation operations and security workers here at the port in two separate contracts. We have a very diverse group of people that work here, and we're very proud of that. And I wanted to make sure that you know that we support the port's view on diversity and inclusion, and that we hope that you continue that, because we know that in the future there may be some pressures on that, but we will stand with you to support that. Our motto in the ILW is "An injury to one is an injury to all," but we also want to make sure that outside of our union, that we also support our brothers and sisters, union workers here that are struggling to get a contract, specifically the operating engineers, and that we stand with them too. And once again, I'd like to thank everybody here for having me, and we look forward to a professional and productive future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Executive Director and Commissioners. I'm here to speak in favor of the Local 9, or Local 9, excuse me, I'm Dan McKissin with ILW Local 19 and the International Executive Board. I'm here to speak in favor of Items F and G on the Local 9 contract. Look, it's really good to see where two entities came together to negotiate efficiency and safety at the airport and security. It's really good to see that they worked together on this. You know, the members, the leaders of this local have worked really hard, I'm really proud of where they've come. They've had some tough times, but they've turned that local around, and they did a really good job. My only criticism would be maybe it takes a little longer than it should. We're over, I think, a year, it's been getting this voted on over a year after they opened negotiations, but fully supported this. I'd also like to thank the Executive Director for his comments on the industrial lands, really appreciate that. It affects every port in the state, and we need to protect those industrial lands, but please support the contract proposal for Local 9. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. That concludes our sign-ups today. Is there anyone else present or on the Teams call who didn't sign up who wishes to address the Commission? All right. Seeing none, this time I'll ask the clerk to give a synopsis of any written comments received over the course of lead-up to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Commission Vice President, members of the Commission, and Executive Director Metrick. We've received 12 written comments for our meeting today, actually 13, we had a submission from the room here. These have been previously distributed to you and will become a part of the meeting record today. Five written comments have been received asking the Commission to not approve the International Tourism Marketing Agreement postponed from the December 10 Commission meeting, and to decrease carbon emissions and protect the environment. These have been submitted by 350 Tacoma, John Burnell, Laura Gibbons, William Myers, and Sarah Shifely. Kristen Barber submitted a written comment generally asking the port to reduce emissions. And then six written comments were received asking the Commission to support Item 9A on the agenda, the visitor economy and benefits that marketing brings to the local communities. And these were submitted by Tammy Blount Canavan, President and CEO of Visit Seattle, Tyler Gosnell, who spoke earlier, from U.S. Travel Association, Carrie Hyland, Tourism Cares, Brad Jones, Executive Director of Visit Bellevue, Siobhan Powell, Golden Brick's Events, and Austin Walters. And then the submission from the room is from Michael Jones, shop steward, and he writes to commemorate the significance of Lent in the Christian community and invites everyone to join the McMicken Heights Church in C-TAC, their community celebration of Lent on March 9 at 10:15 a.m. And that concludes the written comments that we've received today.
Thank you, Clerk Hart. Before we move on, I just, I really want to express gratitude. I don't get to do this very often as the VP to preside over the meeting, but public comment is a truly valuable thing for the Commission, and as I mentioned earlier, it can come in this form, or it can also come as an email or a phone call, even if we're not there. You can leave a voicemail, you can send us a postcard, any way that you want to submit a public comment that gets in front of us. We do take these very seriously. I think we all read everyone, and it really does shape the way we think about decisions. So, thank you all for bravely submitting public comment, however you so choose to do. Hearing no further testimony, we're going to move on in the agenda. Commissioner Hamid, I believe you'd like the floor at this time.
Thank you, yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Wonderful, thank you, Commissioner Vice President Hawkins. I have prepared an order format, a motion for the Commission's consideration today. You have a copy of that order, I believe, in front of you. This motion sets conditions on the port's joint marketing agreement with and funding of State of Washington Tourism, SWT. I'd like to make a motion at this time to direct the Executive Director to include language in the joint marketing agreement with SWT that ensures SWT will not promote cruising with marketing funds, and also include language that ensures SWT will promote responsible tourism in accordance with the port's responsible tourism efforts. This promotion of responsible tourism shall include educating potential travelers about responsible tourism in Washington State in advance of their travel to Washington. The agreement shall also include language promoting less-resourced destination marketing organizations. Similarly, port staff shall highlight less-visited and resourced attractions in their interactions with SWT and make every effort to ensure this marketing aligns with the port's responsible tourism strategy and policies.
Okay, so there was a motion. Is there a second?
So moved, second.
Commissioner Philman seconded, all right. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'll ask a question.
Commissioner Phil, go ahead.
So, I haven't had a chance to digest this. I received this language literally 10 minutes ago. I received this language literally 10 minutes ago. Is this going to do anything that isn't already being done?
Commissioner, we're going to have the presentation, but this is in alignment with what the program is, except for the line about, the line about not promoting cruise. Cruise isn't a part of this.
So this isn't actually stopping you from doing something that you're already doing?
That is correct for these funds. We can answer this, Nick, you can answer that directly, but it is not part of this. So it's in alignment, except for that one.
Yeah, this is in line with what our work has consisted of. We've never marketed cruise per se. We have encouraged cruisers who are coming to add additional nights, to bring additional benefits to our local communities. But selling cruise has not been part of what we've done in the past or what SWT has done.
So what does this do?
Commissioner Mohammed, would you like to respond?
Maybe this will help Commissioner Cho, but maybe Commissioner Cho's questions is more directed at staff. But I just wanted to clarify that, I mean, Commissioner Colkins, you were just speaking about the importance of public comment and how that is an important part of our deliberation. And I think one of the things that this does is, one, clarify that the promotion of cruise is not part of this program. And I heard Executive Director Metrick underscore that, and I think that is a very important clarification. Those are two separate programs, and I do think that that has been conflated with the amount of comments, public comments we've received, both in person and in writing. And so I think that is one of the things that this order does. It provides that clarification for the public and for staff. And so I hope that is helpful in the reasons of bringing this motion forward. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Mohammed, can I ask a sort of a point-of-order question? Why are you bringing this as a separate order rather than as an amendment to the authorization that we're going to consider? Maybe Clerk Hart can help us understand why this way rather than as an amendment to another authorization.
Commissioner Colkins, I don't have a preference on that. That was the recommendation I received from the Commission's staff office.
Yeah, I think we, Aaron Pritchard, Chief Staff of the Commission Office, as far as process is concerned, because this is an action brought forward by the executive, it is not clear, there's not a clear path for amending an executive request. You could do that through sort of negotiations. What the order does is essentially allow commissioners to vote on a particular position that will then inform the executive as he goes forward with these contracts. So we believed it was a clearer, cleaner approach to making these changes.
Clerk Hart, any expertise? I guess I'm, where this introduces an amendment, that feels like a regular sort of course of business in a, in a public meeting like this. And it allows us to, we can discuss the amendment per se, make adjustments to the language. I'm hearing a little bit of heartburn from staff around a single line in the proposed order. And so I suppose we could amend the order to exclude that line if there was an opportunity for achieving majority of consensus with that change. Commissioner Mohammed, would you entertain an amendment to your order?
Again, I didn't have a preference, it being a motion or an amendment. And so I will go with your preferred option, Commissioner Colkins.
Mr. Commission Vice President, the way that this has been presented is that this is a directive as opposed to an amendment to the actual agreement that's coming forward. So I believe that's the reason that it's come forward in this way. And I think if Commissioner is amicable to making an amendment to her motion, that that would be accepted and in order at this time.
Great. And I want to make sure, Commissioner Fellman, you have a chance to share your thoughts?
Yep, thank you. In terms of the purpose of the, of the order, I do believe that, you know, the direction was from staff to, to make it as an order rather than trying to amend what the executive side is trying to do. And it doesn't, as Executive Metrick said, it doesn't really impact the intent of the effort. But, you know, it was really only two years ago when I went to London in doing some of this international promotion, that we really put this emphasis on responsible tourism as being a focus of, of that work. And so making it clear that this is the kind of focus of our work going forward is, I think, clarifying and while not twisting anybody's arm. I think there's a reason to point out that this is what we do when we go overseas, and it is responsive to the community's input. The fact is, there is a separate budget for cruise promotion, and so this is not necessary to be used for this purpose. But to clarify that it's not being used for this purpose, again, addresses public concern and makes it clear that this is the intent. So I am in support of it as well as in the form that it comes.
Commissioner Cho?
Yeah, I can clarify to the public right now. This is not being used for cruise promotion purposes. Period. So I'm still trying to understand why this order is necessary. I think as a compromise, I would suggest, and I think my colleagues are working towards a more comprehensive tourism strategy that this port needs, that it clarifies exactly how dollars are being spent where. And I think that is the bigger picture here. That is the goal. I think, I think this order is kind of a knee-jerk reaction, and I don't find it to be necessary, especially considering that this doesn't really alter anything that the executive has proposed in front of us. So I'm not inclined to support it, and I suggest that the Commission, and maybe I'll work on this order, commission a strategic study on how we are going to move forward on tourism for the next several years.
Commissioner Fellman, you just brought your hand down. Commissioner Mohammed?
Thank you. It wasn't, Commissioner Cho was not a knee-jerk reaction. This order has been, been worked on for over several weeks and should have came in front of commissioners at that time. And the language is actually not new. I believe it was language that was included, then removed, but should have been reviewed by all commissioners, is my understanding. And so if there needs additional time for commissioners to review or provide amendments, we can postpone the whole item and deal with it at a different time. But if this doesn't do anything, I don't see what the big challenge is. Providing clarification for the public is important. We say it's part of our deliberation process, and we shouldn't have any issues putting that in writing. Thank you for the time.
Any further discussion?
Point of clarification, Mr. Commission Vice President, the language that was read by Commissioner Mohammed was, is it on the floor in the, in the format that it was read, or is there a proposed amendment to it?
I, thank you, Clerk Hart. I had the same question because that language was different than the language that we received from the most recent copy. And in fact, the way it was read did not include the line about cruise, which I think is the point of contention here. Commissioner Mohammed, are you comfortable with the language as you read into the record earlier?
I am comfortable with the motion, how I read it, and it's the motion I would like to keep on the floor.
Okay. I'm, I think I'm going to read it one more time for the record to make sure we're all on the same page, and then we can move to a vote. Okay, "The motion at the time is to direct the Executive Director to include language in the joint marketing agreement with SWT that ensures SWT will promote responsible tourism in accordance with the port's responsible tourism efforts. This promotion of responsible tourism shall include educating potential travelers about responsible tourism in Washington State in advance of their travel to Washington. The agreement shall also include language promoting less-resourced destination marketing organizations. Similarly, port staff shall highlight less-visited and resourced attractions in their interactions with SWT, and make every effort to ensure this marketing aligns with the port's responsible tourism strategy." Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to move to a vote, and I'm going to ask Clerk Hart to call the roll.
Thank you. For the motion before us, beginning with Commissioner Colkins?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
No.
Thank you, Commissioner Fellman.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Three ayes, one a for this item.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed, for bringing that to the agenda. With that, the motion passes. Okay, at this time, we'll take up Item 9A, Unfinished Business, on our agenda. It has been requested that we take this item up earlier in our agenda due to the public interest in the item, and our key presenters also in need of catching a flight this afternoon. So the main motion for Item 9A is currently on the floor from the December 10, 2024 meeting. Clerk Hart, please read Item 9A into the record. Executive Director Metrick will introduce the item.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 9A, Authorization for the Executive Director to Execute a Joint Marketing Agreement with the State of Washington Tourism, a state government agency to promote international tourism to Seattle and Washington State in selected international markets for three years at a rate of $500,000 per year for a total not to exceed $1,500,000, and that a Commission determination that a competitive process is not appropriate or cost-effective, and exempting this contract from a competitive process consistent with RCW 53.19.020. And again, the main motion is before the Commission from the December 10 meeting.
Commissioners, we already dipped our toe into this a little bit, but we are presenting for your consideration the 2025 International Marketing Agreement with the State of Washington Tourism. A partnership designed to advance the port's century agenda goals and promote the region as a sustainable, inclusive, and globally competitive tourist industry. Tourism is, marketing is a strategic investment that drives economic growth throughout the state and supports jobs through visitor spending, vital tax revenues, and vital tax revenues that benefit local communities. This agreement focuses on attracting high-value international travelers who spend more, stay longer, and engage deeply with our region's diverse neighborhoods and businesses. We recommend approval of this agreement and welcome any questions or discussion on how we can continue to support economic development in our region through tourism. And I have listed here Nick Leanti, Director of Tourism Development for us, and, and I'm sorry.
And Mike Mo is here in place of David Blandford.
And I know David Blandford was listed as the--
He was called away to Olympia today, so happy to have Mike here with me today. As you can see, my voice is struggling a little today, but we'll make it through here. I know we've heard a lot of this before. So happy to be back in front of you to go a little bit deeper and share about how we, how we market tourism and manage that tourism in a responsible way. And we are seeking your approval for the proposed $500,000 per year agreement with State of Washington Tourism. And you'll see as we go through our presentation, the main focal point here is that tourism is not for the tourist, it's for the locals. Those of us who live in and love Seattle, we know that many of our favorite local businesses, restaurants, arts organizations, and attractions are facing increased business costs, razor-thin margins, and an uncertain future. As a leading export, tourism has the ability to support places we cherish by driving spending, generating essential tax revenue, and creating jobs that bolster businesses and enhance our communities. The Port's Century Agenda states the goal at advancing this region as a leading tourism destination and business gateway while strengthening the competitiveness of SEA in the regional and global marketplace. Our work supports this mission through responsible tourism marketing and management. And even though the port itself is not a destination, by working with a destination partner like SWT, our power to drive the tourism industry in a positive way cannot be overstated. The port has been involved in international tourism marketing and management for over 40 years, and has played a seminal role in navigating SWT's post-pandemic recovery with the belief that a strong state office of tourism is vital to delivering results for our destinations and residents. As you heard from so many of the destination partners earlier today, they have a, they have strong faith in SWT's work. Next slide, please. So we have three main pillars, just of the big picture of what we do in our department. We have our local investment, which is our grant programs, our focus on responsible tourism, and this marketing and management pillar that holds it all together. Next slide, please. Through our work with our grant programs, the port directly invests in local organizations each year. Over the years, we've modified the grant evaluation criteria to emphasize diversity, inclusion, and destination stewardship so that each recipient's project advances these port priorities. Additionally, State of Washington Tourism funds grants specifically supporting rural, indigenous, and sustainable tourism. Responsible inclusive tourism is the North Star for both the port and SWT, which makes us such great partners. These grants help organizations share their stories and work hand-in-hand with our global marketing, which amplifies those stories throughout the travel industry and around the globe. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Executive Director Metrick. My name is Mike Mo. I am the Director of Tourism Development and Strategic Partnership for State of Washington Tourism. I'm here in place of our CEO, David Blandford, who, like we said, he's called away to Olympia. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wanted to start with, when we reestablished a statewide tourism office, we really not only wanted to be a marketing and promotion organization, but really a management organization. We've centered responsible travel as a main pillar of our marketing, and we've even created a responsible travel hub on our State of Washington Tourism website in partnership with Recrate Responsibly and other partners across the state. We've always encouraged visitation to rural and underserved communities, and we've worked with our DMO partners across the state, as you've heard, but also including Seattle Southside here in Sea-Tac that represents Des Moines and Toquilla. We've offered them subsidized opportunities to go to trade shows internationally, to do sales missions, to participate in co-op opportunities, and familiarization and media tours. Obviously, Seattle is our main gateway, and we work very closely with Visit Seattle, and we always, it's a huge part of our story. But much of our job is really to try to showcase what we have to offer throughout the state outside of Seattle, and really try to bring those visitors to those areas. As we've mentioned before, 80% of the businesses and tourism are small businesses, and so supporting tourism is supporting small business. And the results of our program have, has been regional resilience and economic vitality.
Next slide, please. The port continues to be a leader on the responsible tourism front, promoting eco-friendly tourism practices, supporting local businesses that prioritize sustainability, and encouraging tourists to engage in responsible behaviors. The port, led by Commissioner Fellman's efforts, helps sponsor and organize the Responsible Outdoor Travel Summit, which is connected to SWT's annual conference each year, and will return for its fourth iteration this fall. We have also produced a Washington-specific responsible travel handbook in partnership with global leaders Tourism Cares and the Travel Foundation that provides a blueprint for destinations across the state to employ inclusive, responsible practices that create a welcoming environment for all visitors. The port is also working with the Snow Valley Chamber to develop a responsible tourism action plan through SWT's Rural Tourism Support Program. The port and Commissioner Fellman played a vital role in getting this program off the ground and ensuring the right people were at the table, including community stakeholders, land managers, and the Snoqualmie Tribe.
Since our reestablishment, we've really considered ourselves a sustainable organization, and we've aligned with Port of Seattle every step of the way. It's not our goal to try to cram in more hikers in our crowded trailheads. We're not trying to bring more people to the Pike Place Market on a cruise day. Our goal is really to make tourism a positive force on behalf of Washington residents. We strive to make all of our marketing responsible travel marketing. And our marketing not only includes promotion, but also includes travel advisory, education, know before you go, crisis mitigation, and recovery. It's important, like when we have a wildfire in one of our eastern Washington areas, that people know when that fire is over and that people can return to help the local economies. Our marketing and management strategy is routing tourism to where it needs to go and when it needs to go there.
Next slide, please. Is that you?
That's you. Okay. So international marketing is crucial. It allows us to attract diverse tourists. It enhances our economic growth while encouraging cultural exchange, and we're really able to help promote these destinations that you heard from earlier, and our businesses in valuable markets where they wouldn't be able to reach on their own. This map shows where we've delivered global industry opportunities. It shows our familiarization and press trips. In King County alone, in the last year, we've had famine press trips go to Woodinville, Sea-Tac, Toquilla-- Sea-Tac, Taquilla, the CID, Bellevue, Ballard, West Seattle, Taquilla, Beacon Hill, Raynor Beach, Columbia City, the Central District, Issaquah, Snoqualmie Valley, and many more. It also shows where we've put in photo and video assets for our partners around the state. Those photos and videos are not only used for SWT, but also our partners, including the smaller chambers and economic development districts. We also, as Nick mentioned, have been running our Rural Tourism Support Program. Tomorrow is our first workshop for that program in the Snoqualmie Valley. We're very excited to have Commissioner Philemon keynote our lunch in that workshop. And that program is designed to provide structure for a destination to decide for itself what they want tourism to be. And our first program was up in northeastern Washington, and they wanted to really grow their tourism. They have a beautiful place, but they just don't have anybody coming to see it. And so we've helped them develop the infrastructure necessary and develop the marketing assets they need to bring people to the area. The Snoqualmie Valley is very different. They have a ton of tourists, so it's not necessarily about bringing more tourists in the summer, but it's dispersing that tourism and then helping them determine how to make sure that the tourism is not making a negative impact on their community. This map also shows our grant program. Since 2022, we've awarded over $2.3 million for over 120 projects. Those projects include funding for content of the Snoqualmie Tribe Ancestral Land Movement, digital storytelling for Centro Cultura Mexicano in Redmond, and LGBTQ community trainings by GSBA throughout western Washington.
Next slide, please. And as you can tell, our marketing is much more than advertising. In fact, very little of what we do is advertising. The bulk of our tourism marketing is a strategic communications plan that drives increased visitor spending and positive economic impact to the region in an equitable way. We conduct educational seminars, presentations, sales missions that educate the industry on how we want to position our destination globally to create that positive cycle. And by working with SWT's network of global agencies, the port is able to conduct these efforts on an international scale. Through this work, we are able to collaborate with local thought leaders and elevate the voices of our diverse communities and businesses to engage a global audience and showcase the unique, authentic stories that set Washington apart from the crowd. And this helps us bring in visitors who are well-educated about our destination and share our passion for authentic connections and protecting the places we love. You see some examples of the work generated through our efforts here. Story about traveling through the region car-free and visiting neighborhoods such as the Central District, CID, Beacon Hill, and more, while also highlighting coffee culture and recreation opportunities and cultural sites like the Jimi Hendrix Memorial, Thomas Danbo's Trolls, and the Kubota Gardens. We look to involve local businesses, tribes, residents, and stakeholders in our marketing and planning and promotion. Their input is invaluable in ensuring benefits are equally distributed and that the community's voice is heard. Next slide, please.
So the Port of Seattle and SWT, we've worked together to really value quality over quantity, and that's why the international market is so important. International visitors significantly outspend domestic visitors. They help fill our rooms and sell our tickets midweek, shoulder season, and off-season. As was mentioned earlier, our Asian markets continue to lag. That's why last week I visited India and Hyderabad with Brand USA to expand that market. This funding will go to help our mission, our sales mission to Japan and South Korea in April. This important international partnership with the port allows us to allocate other resources for responsible travel efforts, destination developments, and grants. And as was mentioned earlier, somebody stole my line, but third-party data shows that for every dollar spent, $29 comes back to our state, and three of those dollars is through local and state taxes.
It's a stat worth repeating.
It's a stat worth repeating, yes.
Next slide, please. So we're here today to request commission approval for the $1.5 million over the next three years for the joint marketing agreement between the port and State Of Washington Tourism. And as is shown, global marketing is not all about the numbers, but it helps position our region as a culturally inclusive and tourism-friendly destination that helps drive the positive cycle of sustained economic and cultural benefits. As we strive to increase visitor-related spending across our region, we encourage visitors to add nights to their trips. If someone is flying into SEA, we want them to spend as much time as possible supporting local businesses in our cities and towns with a special focus on those lesser-resourced destinations and attractions. It's also important to note the other side of the coin. Seattle is proud to be a diverse and globally-connected city, and our work supporting the routes for SEA also provides locals increased connectivity to the world as they look to visit their families and the places they love. And with, as you can see with strategic marketing, the more we put in, the more the community gets out. Next slide, please.
So in summary, our continued partnership with the port will ensure that statewide communities and regions are represented at international trade shows, on sales missions, and have opportunities like co-ops and fam tours. We'll make sure that destinations are properly trained so they can book and make the most out of this business. We'll leverage the FIFA World Cup to spread economic development outside of Seattle and develop cross-border international tourism business by partnering with British Columbia. In fact, we're already partnering with Destination B.C. to create itineraries.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press [bleep].
I don't think, I don't think it means to.
Okay, to take, to take people off of the I-5 corridor.
You are no longer muted.
To take people off of the I-5 corridor and make sure that there are other ways to access Washington and B.C. Our program will continue to focus on responsible travel. Our familiarization tours will drive awareness and inclusion, and our close alignment with the port will include high-level strategic planning and programming with Visit Seattle, our state's gateway destination. It is much more effective if we are one true voice for Washington.
Thank you, Mike. And Commissioners, we need to work on both sides of the equation. We need not only to continue developing destinations through direct investment, such as with our grants or partnership programs or our responsible tourism efforts, we need to tell Washington's story to attract visitors who want to experience the diverse culture, recreation, and attractions that Washington offers. Like everyone knows, we have the Space Needle, everyone knows we have a market. Do they know all the stories about our local creators, chefs, winemakers? Do they know the stories of our native nations? Do they know about our agriculture and trade leadership? Do they know about our spirit as a community, our cultural heritage, and the colorful history throughout our state? These are the stories we're telling and the visitors we're looking to attract. This agreement allows us to market and manage tourism throughout our region in alignment with the port's responsible tourism strategy, and approval from the commission benefits all Washingtonians. Thank you for your time and your faith in us to do this work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick and Mike. We're going to take a moment and ask for any questions for staff from Commissioners.
I could.
Go ahead, Commissioner Philemon.
So I'm sorry I can't be there, but I'm attending the tourism conference here in Victoria, B.C., where the whole focus is on about sustainability and how the receiving communities can be respected and the environments in which they live while at the same time creating a positive visitor experience. And I think the progress that the port and Washington State Tourism has embraced this concept is really extraordinary, and I'm very much in support of this effort and feel that this going forward, we're only going to build on this very positive experience. And as far as comments we've heard in the past about concerns about this, you know, adding pressure, I'm very much concerned about the pressure that's coming with FIFA, and that without this marketing of the right sentiment, pack your sense of responsibility, know before you go, that we will have more negative impact from promotional things like FIFA unless we do have programs like this. So I'm very much in support of the program. It's more of a statement than a question.
Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, quick question. Do we know of other ports that also invest in tourism?
I think many ports invest, or at least work closely with their local tourism partners. As you know, I came up here from California, I know SFO works closely with San Francisco Travel, and even our airport in Sacramento had a similar agreement to this with Visit Sacramento. So just in my personal experience, there's very much that relationship in destinations across the country.
Great. I'll just make a quick comment on this, and first, I want to take a moment to appreciate and acknowledge those who have spoke up about their concerns around cruise, I mean, not just cruise, but tourism in general. You know, I think, obviously, I too am concerned with a lot of the environmental impacts that tourism more broadly has on our local, you know, environment. But the reality is that tourism happens whether we like it or not. And the point of this effort, the $500,000 for the next three years, isn't really to promote more tourism on net. I think the point of this is to spread the peanut butter. And while we know that Seattle is a very highly desirable destination for tourists, we here in Seattle know that there are a lot of gems in the area, and you heard from many of those advocates today in public comment, the Issaquas of this world, the Woodenvilles of this world, they have so much to offer when it comes to tourism. And so what this effort really does is ensures that those who do come here for tourism are staying a couple extra days perhaps so that they can really get the full picture and the full experience that the Pacific Northwest offers. At the end of the day, these tourists are still taking one flight in and one flight out. And I do think that from an economic development standpoint, which is part of our mandate as an institution, it's to ensure that a rising tide lifts all boats. And so if the tide is lifting on tourism today, post-COVID-19, we want to make sure that those positive economic impacts are being spread to other parts of the region that may not get the same attention that a Pike Place Market gets, right? And so I really hope that the public understands that our effort here and our charge here is to ensure that the existing tourism that we're getting continues to benefit all of those within our region. And for that reason, I will be supporting today's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mohammed, did you have any comments or questions? Oh, yeah, saw your hand go up.
Well, yes, my hand did go up, and then it went down when you called on me. I also am looking forward to supporting this program and thank staff for bringing it forward. I obviously support workforce development and tourism that prioritize sustainability and just really appreciate the presentation and the time that went into putting the presentation together and doing it in a thoughtful way that also addressed some of the concerns that we did hear from the public. I appreciate what you guys incorporated in it, underscoring the intent to educate visitors and around sustainable travel practice, practices in promoting less-impacted destinations. And so I just really appreciate the effort that has gone into this. And yeah, looking forward to supporting this item today as well.
Okay, any further comments from Commissioners? My only comment is, you know, I think of this as like hidden gems tourism promotion. And I loved hearing from Woodenville and Issaquah and folks on the peninsula, and you can think of dozens of other little towns and parks and places that get very few tourists and would love to have those tourists come in and buy from their stores and patronize their restaurants and hotels and are the exact opposite of over-toured. They'd love to have more visitors. So the fact that this is going towards supporting that kind of destination marketing organization and destination, I think is really positive. And, you know, this is, based on the stats you provided us, even if you're off by an order of magnitude, it's still a good business decision. If you had three-to-one results as a return on investment on your, on marketing, you'd be thrilled with it. So the fact that it does create that kind of economic opportunity for folks, you know, as Commissioner Cho said, people are going to travel, and if we can encourage them to come here to our state and do so in a responsible way that's sustainable for the communities where they visit, that's a win for us generally. So I'll be voting in support of this as well.
Thank you.
All right, Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the vote. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
I'm sorry, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
With regards to the order.
We're going to take up the order again at the end of the meeting. So we're going to take the vote on the.
Okay, I will not be able to attend the end of the meeting. I am taking time out of a conference right now, and it was taken up at the beginning of this, so I'm just.
Okay, so we're going to complete the vote on item 9A. All right, Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the vote. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
Thank you, this is for approval of item 9A, beginning with Commissioner Cawkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Philemon.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you, four ayes, zero nays for this item.
All right, and with that, the motion passes. Commissioner Philemon, we will, we're going to move on with the calendar. I will have somebody text you when we're going to bring up this item again so that you can step back into the meeting. Clerk Hart?
I'm sorry, just for a point of order, why was it taken up now and then not resolved now?
We did resolve it.
Okay, so I thought the order, there was some question as to whether what was read into the record was what Commissioner Mohammed put into the order.
Mr. Commissioner Vice President.
Go ahead, Clerk.
That was some question as to whether it was consistent.
I think it would be in order if we were to just dispense with this.
Okay.
Now.
All right, can we do consent agenda first?
All right.
I think we've got some folks in the audience who may be here.
All right, I will have to leave you now.
Commissioner Philemon, we're going to do consent agenda and then we'll return to the order.
He's disconnected.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, could we text?
Can you let him know he knows that?
All right. All right, our next order of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered separately immediately after adoption of the remaining consent agenda items. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda covering items 8A through 8I.
So moved.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Second.
Thank you. The motion was made and seconded. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called for approval of the consent agenda.
Beginning with Commissioner Cawkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you, three ayes, zero nays for approval of the consent agenda.
And the motion passes. All right.
Mr. Commissioner Vice President, if we could go back and seek clarity before we get too far off of item 9A and the motion that was made earlier in the meeting. It is my understanding that there was perhaps a versioning issue, and the motion that was read into the record by Commissioner Mohammed had a nuanced difference than the one that you had read into the record. So I think we're just looking for some clarity on what the motion is that was intended to be moved.
All right, Commissioner Mohammed, I think what we need to do is have you read what you had intended to introduce in its entirety so we can follow along closely, and then, process-wise, I don't know, we've taken the vote, so do we need to retake the vote?
I would just retake the vote, I would just redo the action, just for the sake of clarity. And Commissioner Philemon has rejoined.
I want to remind my fellow Commissioners that this is a directive that our executive director has heard the entire discussion of. I think he has the sense of the body. I don't want us to spend too much time on hair-splitting around this, but Commissioner Mohammed, can you reread what you hoped to, what you intended to be the text of the order?
Thank you, Commissioner Vice President Cawkins. I'm happy to reread it into the record, but considering the robust discussion we had, Clerk Hart, if you could also maybe provide comments on this, would it be better maybe if we just kept it the way that Commissioner Cawkins read it and just simply added a line that says at the end, "Promotion of cruise is not part of this program," period? My understanding is from Executive Director Metrick that is a fact, and so if we could just include that fact so it's clear for the public. If not, I'm happy to read my version into the record and we can take a vote.
All right, Commissioner Cho.
I'm just trying to simplify it.
So if I could just clarify the confusion here, and this is exactly why I have a problem with this process. We have two versions of this order, with one that includes something that people have a heartburn with and one that does not.
a heartburn with and one that does not. The, the version that Commissioner Calkins introduced does not include the language that was introduced to us just a few minutes before, but the version that Commissioner Mohammed introduced does, which is why we have confusion over which version of the order we are introducing. So I don't think we need to make any amendments. We just need to decide on which version we are introducing and voting on.
And through Commissioner...
Commissioner Calkins, can I speak?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Mohammed.
Well, it doesn't look like I have the votes anyway, so let's not waste any additional time. Commissioner Cho already voted no on it, so we can move forward. And Commissioner Felammon has left the room, so we don't need to spend additional time reading things into the record.
I'm still in the room.
Oh, you're back.
I was asked to come back in the room, so I, I, I think you asked us a procedural question. Do you amend the one that's been read in, or do we read in a new one? And, you know, Clerk Hart, just give us direction and we can move on.
So, thank you. Through Commissioner Vice President to Commissioner Felammon and other commissioners, the version that was read into the record by Commissioner Calkins originally is the one that passed. There is a proposal to amend that motion to include the verbiage "promotion of cruise is not part of this program." Commissioner Mohammed, do you still wish to add that to the motion that has passed or no?
That would be my preference.
So there is a, a motion then?
Commissioner Felammon, do you have any comments?
No, I just wanted it to be procedurally good, so, and be done with it.
So there is another motion on the floor currently.
So a motion to amend the, the directive that we have passed?
That's correct.
With the statement?
"Promotion of cruise is not a part of this program."
Okay. And do we have a second?
For the purposes, yes. I second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just, I just wanted a point of clarification. So now that I know what we are voting on, I'd like to amend my vote, amend my vote on the first motion, which I thought was a version that omitted the, the cruise portion. Does that make sense?
It does.
And I would like to vote aye in favor of the last one, but I would vote against no against this one.
So we've got to take one motion at a time. The motion before us currently is to add the verbiage "promotion of cruise is not a part of this program."
All right. Let's go to a vote on that. Clerk Hart, please call the roll. So we are voting on whether to add the sentence to the directive we passed earlier today stating that "promotion of cruise is not a part of this program."
That's correct. That is the motion before us at this time. Beginning with Commissioner Calkins?
Nay.
Commissioner Cho?
Nay.
Commissioner Felammon?
Aye.
Can you, can you repeat that, Commissioner Felammon?
That's aye. That's aye.
Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
So that is a tie vote, Mr. Commissioner Vice President, and a tie vote would fail according to parliamentary law.
The, the amendment language fails. Do we need to take up another vote now that there's clarity for Commissioner Cho for the original directive?
I would probably just seek to retake that motion in its form that it was read into the record by you, and we can reread that into the record just for the point of clarity.
Yeah.
It did pass regardless.
You're on the record now as voting against that earlier one, but if you wanted to retake the vote?
Aye.
Okay. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna note the correction to his vote in the minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your patience on this.
I will have to leave you now. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Felammon. And I, I want to say thank you to all the staff who've been working on this for the last however many number of days to, to come to a directive and correct language. I know you guys are toiling to hurt us commission cats, so I'll call it that. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have one new business item. Clerk Hart, please read the item into the record. Executive Director Metrick will then introduce it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 10A, Authorization for the Executive Director to authorize a two-year contract with three optional one-year extensions with a not-to-exceed amount of $5 million for a vendor to operate the Airport's Transportation Management Association, also known as SEA Moves, on behalf of the Port of Seattle.
Commissioners, today we're seeking authorization for a contract that will engage a specialized vendor to operate the SEA Moves Transportation Management Association, providing essential commuting resources and to support SEA Airport's 24/7 tenant workforce. Established under the Commission Resolution 3759, the SEA Moves program addresses the unique transportation needs of thousands of non-port employees who commute to SEA daily. This centralized service will reduce single occupancy vehicle commutes by offering trip planning, trip planning assistance, carpool incentives, transit access programs, and active transportation initiatives, all while advancing our sustainability and accessibility commitments. This approach mirrors proven practices at leading organizations like Expedia and Microsoft, leveraging industry expertise to enhance effectiveness. To fund the program sustainably, it will be partially supported by a surcharge on employee parking fees aligning with federal requirements and state law. This program will play a vital role in supporting commute trip reduction goals while contributing to the port's broader sustainability objectives. We recommend approval of this contract and welcome your questions and discussion. And with the presenters of this afternoon are Peter Lindsay, Assistant Director, Airport Operations, and David Tombarowski, Transportation Access Program Manager. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter Lindsay.
Thank you, Executive Director Metrick, and thank you, commissioners. My name is Peter Lindsay. I am the Assistant Director for Landside Operations at SEA. And we're before you today looking to move an important part of our TMA effort forward by establishing a contract with a vendor for support services for front counter work and resources for commuters at SEA. Next slide, please. So this is a familiar slide that we often have. This is our roadmap framework that shows how we go from our principles to the actual initiatives which are included in GTAP program. And the TMA, Transportation Management Association, known as SEA Moves, falls firmly within the GTAP program. And with me today is my colleague, David Tombarowski, who is our GTAP manager, who will fill you in on the details and of our plan for this vendor. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next slide, please. So good afternoon, Commissioner Vice President Calkins, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick, again, David Tombarowski, with SEA Airport Landside Operations, and I manage our Ground Transportation Access Plan and Program. The request before you today relates to one initiative within our body of work under GTAP that focuses on airport employees and their commuting needs. You may remember we last covered this subject in a briefing to you last October. We've divided our SEA Employee Transportation Strategy work into four areas. We are here today to focus on the second one from the left, the establishment of an employee transportation program for SEA workers called SEA Moves, otherwise known as our Transportation Management Association, or TMA. Commissioners, as you know, our airport is made up of hundreds of companies and thousands of individuals who commute here every day to work. This is a varied and diverse workforce in the Port of Seattle, as the airport owner and operator is taking the lead by acting as a consolidating resource and convening entity to expand commute options for all airport employees. Through robust communications and programming run by a dedicated staff, SEA Moves will be a central source of comprehensive commute information for all SEA workers. And we are here today to request contracting authority to solicit for and hire a vendor to operate SEA Moves on the port's behalf. Next slide, please. So as I said, the core function of SEA Moves is to serve as a centralized service provider for airport tenants and employees who work across diverse industries and jobs. It will do this by harmonizing and universalizing commute trip rider information and distributing it across multiple trusted communication channels to reach workers where they're at. However, it will also be available to administer modal-specific programs, namely the three you see listed here. For those that drive to work, we want to offer a carpool program that leverages our main terminal garage and other airport locations. And for those that utilize a bike or a scooter as part of their commute trip, SEA Moves will cater to them as well. Finally, commissioners, you'll recall the order you passed in November of last year that calls for the port to establish a Transit Pass Pilot Program, where the port will provide subsidized transit passes to eligible airport employees. We are designing this pilot program now and plan to administer it via SEA Moves. We expect a good portion of the contractor's time will be dedicated to this program, such as registering employees, turning cards on and off, tracking usage, answering questions, processing return cards, facilitating payments, et cetera. Along with these three action items, SEA Moves staff would perform all the basic tasks that any good employee commute program does, such as staffing a program office, providing trip planning assistance to workers, tabling at recruiting or hiring events, answering common questions, et cetera. And speaking of a program office, we do plan to collaborate and co-locate SEA Moves with our Tenant-Employ Parking Program Office on the mezzanine adjacent to the badging office. And this creates a one-stop shop for employees and their transportation questions. Next slide, please. So this is a lot of work and represents really a new line of business for the Port of Seattle. As such, we would like to employ the services and experience of a firm that specializes in this kind of work, namely embedding themselves in a workplace and delivering programming and resources directly to employees. Hiring a third-party vendor to run a company's employee-facing commute program is a common industry practice, as Executive Director Metrick mentioned, especially here in the Puget Sound region with our tech industry. So today, we're asking for a contracting authority to hire a vendor to operate SEA Moves on the port's behalf. We'd like to structure the contract such that it provides continuity over the startup period, that is, two years of service, followed by three optional one-year extensions, and the value would be a not-to-exceed amount of $5 million. Next slide, please. Now to discuss funding as part of our overall approach to GTAP, how we affect and influence how the traveling public and employees choose to access our airport. We recognize that there is a spending component of this work, but also a revenue component. And we've had for over a year now a fee added on to the monthly cost of tenant-employee parking. In 2025, that fee is $5 per month per card. Our intention is to utilize the proceeds from this fee to fund SEA Moves' operations. You can see on this slide a table from our Finance and Budget Group that gives you a sense of what we forecast, both for the projected number of monthly parking cards and the modest increase in the fee each year. As operations at SEA expand, there'll be more demand for tenant parking. As such, the annual revenue from the fee will also increase. And last slide, please. So to conclude, our next step pending approval today is to engage in the procurement and contracting process for a vendor during the first half of this year. We will provide an update to Commission on this item, as well as the other SEA Employee Transportation Strategy initiatives during our regular mid-year update provided to the Aviation Committee on GTAP. And we hope to select, hire, and onboard a contractor during quarter three of this year, with SEA Moves being chartered and operational by the end of the year. And with that, commissioners, thank you for your time, and Peter and I are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff or comments? Commissioner Cho?
No, I mean, I don't have any questions. We've been briefed on this effort thoroughly, and I really appreciate all the terrific work you're doing. I think this is one of the most exciting things that we're doing when it comes to providing employee benefits and really just making it easier for us to work here at the port. I do believe that it's going to help us in recruitment and retention and, and quite frankly, help us in our goal to become a sustainable port as well. So I just want to thank you for your terrific work. I'm really looking to seeing how this pans out over the next two years and, and figuring out how, how we can make it better and sustainable. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mohammed, any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. Thank you for your work and appreciate the briefings I've received on this item. Great work. Thank you.
Well, this feels like the end of the beginning, the, definitely not the beginning of the end, but definitely feels like after years and years of really putting together an understanding of best practices for other large organizations, other large organisms, let's call it, because that's sort of what, what SEA is, where I think one of you gave me this stat a few months ago, that we're up north of 800 employers.
Yeah.
27,000 workers, something like that. So getting all of those individual entities to kind of sing from the same page of the hymnal is going to be a real challenge. And so at the same time, you know what I love about this program? It does exactly what we want to do in terms of incentives. It disincentivizes a mode that we don't want people using to then pay for a mode we want people using more, modes we want people using more. That's exactly how I think we ought to be pursuing good, wise public policy, that, you know, it's a, the benefits accrue to the folks who are putting the least demand on the resources of our communities. And, and so I think that's great. And specifically, what I'm talking about is folks who are paying to park at the airport or paying a fee which covers the cost of this program, which then encourages other people, including themselves, to find a different way to come, rather than, you know, a, a single occupancy vehicle. So I love that. I, I don't know that we necessarily need it to be a, you know, a set in stone kind of annual reporting or whatever it is, but I do hope you come back to us regularly with updates on what's going well and what's not going well. We want to make sure that this program is successful. And, and I also like to remind folks that this is, although we're beginning to feel some of the pain points of the congestion issues, the, obviously, the concerns from the community around traffic and parking, those kinds of things that we've been working for decades to address, really, the problem is only going to get worse if we don't start taking these kind of proactive measures to move people onto modes of mass transit and other forms of getting to the airport that don't require them driving themselves to get here. So I'm really appreciative. I think this is another example of SEA doing something that other airports are going to model their programs on after, you know, we're going to work out some wrinkles and stuff, but great work. Keep it up. Happy to support this program.
Thank you, Vice President Calkins. And I think I'd add that all of the commissioners should have received our Ground Transportation Access Program work plan for 2025. This is a piece of that, but outlines how we're going to communicate as well as what we're trying to pursue as terms of initiatives for the, for the year. So we do anticipate reporting now through the Aviation Committee. So to the extent that you participate in that committee, we'll have more information. And of course, we have our annual report due typically in July, but we're, of course, aware that we could come back at any time to update the commissioners. So thank you.
Will you remind me, on the ORCA card pilot program, roughly how many of those are we hoping to distribute?
It's a good question. Since the amount of money we have available, it doesn't necessarily limit the number of cards, but it, we, it is a pay-as-you-go system, so the number of cards we distribute will be related to how much they get used by the, by the folks that we distribute them to. If we give, you know, just to say 100 cards out and only five of them get used every day, the, the money will go pretty far. If we give out 100 cards and everyone uses them every day, then, then we'll spend the money quicker.
Great. Okay. Well, that's money I'd love to spend, because it means that folks are ditching their cars and riding transit to get here. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? All right. Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the vote. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
To begin, I made a motion on the floor for that one.
Oh, let me, no, we did not. Good catch.
So moved.
We've got a, a motion from Commissioner Cho. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed. All right. Now, hearing no further questions for this, is, can we please call the roll?
For the vote, beginning with Commissioner Calkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Cho?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. Three ayes, zero nays for this item.
And with that, the motion passes. We are now at Presentations and Staff Reports. Clerk Hart, please read the next item into the record, and Executive Director Metrick will then introduce the item.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 11A, Federal Legislative Agenda for 2025.
Commissioners, this is your first opportunity to provide comments on our proposed 2024 federal priorities.
2025.
Yeah, I read what was in the notes that we had.
Yeah, sorry. Times the years go by, Steve.
Yeah. As much as we'd love to still be in '24.
You can tell that these two...
Our 2025 federal priorities.
Executive Director at one point.
Of course, a new administration can bring both challenges and opportunity, and this presentation will highlight a few of those. We're fortunate to have a strong, to have strong relationships with our congressional delegation, who are showing their deep commitment to working with the port on our priorities. We look forward to working closely with you to advance our federal agenda throughout the year ahead, which is 2025, not 2024. And our presenter this afternoon is the Senior Manager of Federal and International Government Relations, Eric Shinfield. Eric.
And Eric, we are three minutes ahead of schedule, so just go crazy.
Well, luckily, there's a lot to talk about with what's happening in DC right now. So again, good afternoon, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick. My name is Eric Shinfield, and I'm really pleased to be here to brief you on our proposed draft federal legislative agenda for 2025. This is something we do every year to bring this opportunity for you to give us feedback on how we engage in DC, with Congress, with the administration, with the federal agencies that we work with. And obviously, this year, as we just referenced, is a very different year in DC. And so you'll see a very different approach to our federal legislative agenda that I'll walk through very briefly with you here today. Next slide, please. Again, what we're going to do is we're going to start talking about what we've achieved in the year prior, then look at where we are sort of generally in Washington DC for 2025. We'll go through our draft policy priorities and take any feedback you have. Next slide, please. So I do want to start again, like I said, with some real successes. 2024 was a really fantastic year, and as Executive Director Metrick just said, it is really because of the incredible relationship that we have with our congressional delegation, the support they have for us, the true support they have for the port and the communities and the workers here in the airport and the airport communities. And so, of course, one of our biggest successes last year was in the FAA reauthorization bill. We advocated for seven priorities jointly with our communities around the airport, and four of them made it into the final FAA reauthorization bill. I want to make a special thank you to Commissioner Mohammed, who helped lead the DC fly-in with our members of the community to really advocate for these priorities, and obviously, that really had an impact. In addition to those four shared priorities, we also included in the FAA reauthorization bill legislation that gives the port flexibility to determine the future of North Sea Tech Park, and we continue to have those discussions moving forward about how to, sorry.
Eric, can I ask you to pause for a sec?
Yes.
We're going to take a recess, as we've lost our quorum.
I, I'm happy to start over.
So now's a good chance to just tell some dad jokes.
Absolutely.
Cho Tien?
You lost your quorum because?
Commissioner Cho stepped out momentarily.
I see.
So, as many of you know, that the Philadelphia Eagles will be going to the Super Bowl in two weeks. Very excited for that.
Who's their pop star that they bring?
You know, I probably, you know, obviously, we've got Taylor Swift supporting the Kansas City Chiefs. We have a number of. Thank you, Steve, for a memory quest, love, as always.
Okay, we are.
All right. That's all right.
Session. Sorry. It was a nice little comedic interlude.
That's right. Do you want me to start over, or do you want me to?
No, I think you're good.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, great. So, celebrating our successes from 2024, those five items that I mentioned in the FAA Reauthorization Act, also the passage of the Water Resources Development Act that included a number of wins for both the port and the Northwest Sea Port Alliance. One of those, just to call out, was the deauthorization of a portion of the federal waterway near Terminal 25 South, which allows the port to go in and do some really great habitat restoration and salmon habitat work there in the waterway right off of Terminal 25 South as that project moves forward. Continuing to ensure that cruise shore power and seafood cargo infrastructure are eligible for the MARED Port Infrastructure Development Program. Next slide, please. And then continuing to look at some things that we hope will happen in the FY25 bill, which is still under consideration, FY25 appropriations bill, excuse me, that would allow us to finally, finally use federal funds for secondary noise insulation. So fingers crossed that we get that bill over the finish line. We also were able to get several federal dollars, $3 million, from the EPA Clean Ports Program at the end of last year to support our study of alternative maritime fuels. We have two $800,000 earmarks in the FY25 appropriations bill that, again, we hope to pass in the near future. And then finally, successfully supported efforts to add direct service from SEA to Washington, Ronald Reagan Washington National Airport. We're only one of five airports in the country to get an additional slot into that airport that Delta Airlines will be starting in the coming months. So lots to celebrate from 2024. Next slide. So I want to start by talking about how great the last few weeks have been for me personally, because people have finally stopped asking why do we keep Eric Shinfield around? It's, this has been one of the most dramatic reshapings of the federal government over a very brief period of time that we've seen in maybe ever. And so really trying to track this and understand what it means for the port is a challenge, and I agree with Executive Director Metrick that we've got a really fantastic team across the port, executive leadership, legal, all of our departments, trying to really figure out how these changes impact us and what to do about them and how to respond appropriately. Just to start from the high level, of course, there are Republican control of the White House and Congress, President Trump in the White House, 53 Republicans out of 100 in the Senate, and technically, 220 Republicans out of 435 in the House, although within the next few weeks, that will be down to 217 until about April. So really, just a one-vote majority in the House for Republicans. What that small majority means in the House and Senate, particularly because the Senate mostly needs 60 votes to pass a bill, is that there will be very limited opportunities for major legislation, and most of the action will occur through executive order and agency regulation, although we did just see even last week that the Lakin-Riley Act is something where there are enough conservative and moderate Democrats that will vote for certain pieces of legislation, for example, around bipartisan immigration legislation, that maybe there will be more legislation than in general we might think. We know that there will be at least one major piece of legislation passed this year, which is a quote-unquote reconciliation package. That is a special budget-related maneuver that allows something to pass the House and the Senate with a simple majority, so you don't need 60 votes in the Senate to pass a reconciliation bill. We think there will only be one, but there could be two in 2025, and that focus will be on funding for border, energy, defense, tax, and trade. We'll pay for that through a number of budget cuts, including some repeal of some Inflation Reduction Act provisions. And again, that reconciliation bill can only be fiscal-related, it cannot be policy. So that's not a bill to include policy changes, but rather to cut spending, to add spending, to change tax policy, those sorts of things. Next slide, please. Here's what we know about the Trump administration's priorities, and we've seen this already play out over the first few weeks. Their proactive priorities include immigration restrictions and deportations, budget cuts, tariff increases, regulatory reform and permitting reform, and tax cuts. These are the things they'll be proactively working on. And then similarly, things that they will be proactively working to roll back, again, as we've seen through various executive actions, are environmental considerations and policies, anything having to do with clean energy, environmental justice, those sorts of things, no new grant programs, because they're cutting funding, not adding, cutting non-defense spending. We've heard numbers down to 10% or 15% cuts in non-defense discretionary spending, which would be really huge. Anything having to do with equity or DEI, or again, environmental justice, and of course, actively rolling back protections for various social and cultural issues, abortion, transgender rights, vaccine access, free speech, these types of things. Next slide. So where does that leave us? We, of course, have seen over the past couple of weeks a significant number of actions from President Trump. Some of them we expected, like the voluntary resignation of the FAA administrator, but some of them we did not expect, like the forced removal, or rather, the asking, the firing of both the TSA administrator and the Coast Guard Commandant. And so we have no nominees or no permanent leaders in three of the most important federal agencies for our port, which at the very least leads to delays in major decisions, and certainly, obviously, likely to have major changes in policies when those new leaders come in. Of the 42 executive orders on inauguration day and the many since, here are just a couple of that are particularly notable for our port and our organization. Ending, halting dispersment of IRA and IAJA funds. IRA is the Inflation Reduction Act. IAJA is also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. We saw last night, as Executive Director Metrick said, that there is actually a total pause on federal funding, although some of that is getting rolled back and more specific related to just the things that they're really trying to understand and make sure they don't conflict with their goals around stopping gender ideology, quote-unquote, green and clean energy policies, immigration, DEI, equity, et cetera. So ending all federal DEI programs and funding, and that not only includes at the federal level, but also now they are asking all federal grantees to sign a certificate that says that you do not have a DEI program that, quote-unquote, violates federal anti-discrimination law. You know, sometimes I like to make Pete Rammels very nervous and say things like, "I'm not a lawyer, but..." "I'm not a lawyer, but I, it is my understanding that none of our programs at the port violate federal law. We are very careful to not violate federal law. If we get additional guidance from the federal government about what they mean by violating federal anti-discrimination policies, we will certainly take that into consideration." But right now, we believe very strongly that we're within the bounds of law, and again, I'm not a lawyer. President Trump also instituted an emergency at the southern border, and you've seen, for example, the use of the US military, both for logistical support at the border, as well as deportation flights, halting offshore wind leases, re-establishing the travel ban, and directing agency staff to identify additional countries to add to that ban, halting all refugee admissions, declaring a national energy emergency, including making changes to NEPA, withdrawing from the Paris Climate Agreement, opening up Alaska to more drilling, including the Alaska National Wildlife Reserve. And what didn't make it on this list that happened more recently is renaming Denali to Mount McKinley. So these are just some of the things that have happened in our Pacific Northwest and that affect the port in various ways. And happy to answer additional questions about how we think these specific things impact the port. Next slide. So we used to, in past years, have a full list of all the things that we wanted from the federal government, all the things we'd pursue, and we were very successful in getting many of them. It's a very different environment in DC right now. And so this is the first year where instead of that sort of, hey, here's a bunch of things we want, instead, we have our federal priorities lumped into two buckets, things that we actually still believe we can make progress on in the current Congress and the current administration, and things that we want to make sure to defend, that are going to come under scrutiny, and we want to be able to continue to fight for, at least retain, if not make progress on. So here's the good news. Here's some things that we think can make progress. So I mentioned that reconciliation bill. That reconciliation bill will deal with tax policy, and we actually have a tax policy priority, which is to extend the Sustainable Aviation Fuel Tax Credit, the Blender's Tax Credits, and make sure that it not only stays in place, but expands from three years to 10 years, to give the private sector enough certainty to make major investments in SAF facilities. We actually believe that there's a chance for that. SAF is a bipartisan and nonpartisan issue, and so that is something we believe can be put into the reconciliation bill if we're successful. Similarly, there are a number of proposed investments from the FY25 appropriations bill that needs to be passed by March 14th or extended, and so we're hoping that what has already been passed by either the House or the Senate ends up in the final bill funding to add new CBP officers, including at air and sea gateways, funding for all of the Transportation Security Administration programs that we rely on, and funding for a new PFOS transition grant program that was authorized in the FAA reauthorization bill. I will say that right now, there's general positivity on the idea of getting an FY25 bill done, appropriations bill done by March 14th, at acceptable levels, because you do need both Democrats and Republicans to vote for it. It has to be a bipartisan bill, but obviously, nothing is for certain, and we are looking at the risk of a full-year continuing resolution, which would mean not only do we not get those things, but the two earmarks that I mentioned earlier would not become law if there was a full-year CR. Also, I just want to mention really briefly, on this Customs and Border Protection Officers, in addition to the FY25 appropriations bill, there will be $100 billion proposed in the reconciliation bill for new border security measures, including both staff and wall and technology, and we're hoping that some of that $100 billion could also go to CBP officers for airports and seaports, because we are part of the border as well. A number of other policies that have already been passed that we want to see continue to be implemented, including, of course, those things that I mentioned earlier from our 2024 wins. Next slide, please. And then finally, a couple of things. Pursuit of federal grants. I know there's a pause right now, but we do expect that pause to end, and we do expect there to be grant funding opportunities available. We actually have a grant that we're planning to submit this week, assuming that that grant, NOFO, doesn't get closed temporarily, to do some additional funding, and we have plans for additional funding asked later in the year. So we will continue to pursue that, even though we are not necessarily aligned with some of the Trump administration policies. We do believe that that funding is a good fit for some of the programs and some of the investments we want to make, so we'll work with our congressional delegation on that. And then obviously, advocacy for lots of other bipartisan and nonpartisan opportunities, including, for example, the 2025 Farm Bill and the proposed Farm-to-Fly program that could be really helpful for SAF. Next slide, please. So of course, like I said, there's a lot of areas concerned, and of course, we are going to focus on those policies that have a potential impact on the port, on our operations, on our business, on our employees, and push back on things like tariffs that could be bad for our maritime and aviation cargo businesses, immigration policies that are not aligned with our values, ensuring that travel to the United States is open to everybody who wants to visit, within reason, of course, pushing back on anything that would limit our efforts to be able to follow our raised values, certainly within the bounds of federal anti-discrimination laws, and of course, advocating on behalf of port employees who are going to have their rights impacted. We've seen, just for example, transgender rights subject to two executive orders now, including the most recent one, that is a path to banning transgender individuals from serving in the military. And then, of course, support of key programs, like I said earlier, looking for FY26 appropriations to face cuts of up to 10% to 15% in the non-defense discretionary, and that has the potential to really cut a lot of programs that we care deeply about, that we rely on for our operations and our work here at the port. And that's everything from Sustainable Aviation Fuels to, of course, the Puget Sound Restoration, basic federal staffing, basic investments in infrastructure, all of those things that are subject to potentially being cut by Congress that we want to fight to continue to have funded by the federal government, because we think that they're important. And of course, just basic federal staffing, like I said, there is currently, one of the executive orders by President Trump was a hiring pause and a regulatory pause, and that is going to really become a challenge, particularly as we look at needing to continue to add CBP officers, needing to continue to add TSA officers, needing to make sure that we have enough air traffic controllers to operate this airport and, of course, the seaport as well. So all things that we're concerned about, and we'll continue to talk to our congressional delegation about. So obviously, very quick overview, next slide, of some of the things we're working on. A lot more detail in the memo, of course, and we will continue to track all of these things. There's going to be a lot more change, there's going to be a lot more policies that come from the Trump administration. Some of them will benefit us, some of them will be a challenge to our operations, and so we're going to be really thoughtful about how we engage, who we engage with, and hope to continue to make progress on doing our core business, which is, of course, moving people and goods, but also supporting our employees and our communities. And that is the presentation.
Thank you, Eric. Steve, do you have any follow-up comments before I turn it over to Commissioners?
No, don't. I think Eric covered it, but I think things are changing, and we'll continue to keep Commissioners updated, you know, as we come back with this, if there's any changes in addition to the list that Eric laid out.
All right. Commissioners Mohammed and Cho, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, Eric, thank you for the briefing. I know there was probably a lot that you had to admit for the sake of brevity, but obviously, we're facing challenging times. I think part of what we are concerned as, as a body, but also as a community, is some of the immigration policies that we expect to see. We're already hearing of reports of deportations. I think it would be prudent for us to explain for the public as well what the role is of Customs Border Patrol relative to, for instance, the Immigrations Customs Enforcement. My understanding is that they're separate bodies within the Department of Homeland Security and do not work together, and so I think that clarity would be helpful, and then what we might see or expect going forward, given our experience in the first Trump administration around deportations.
Yeah, thank you so much, Commissioner Cho. So President Trump has promised to carry out the largest deportation program in history. There are, you know, depending on the estimates, 10 to 20 million undocumented immigrants in the United States, and just as a side note to that, one of the first actions that the Trump administration took was to officially declare that we will now refer to them again as illegal aliens. So that is just one. So that is just one of the many, many steps they took, and I think is sort of significant of the approach that they're taking. You know, Commissioner Cho, your point about the division of labor, quote-unquote, in the federal government has generally been true. I want to be clear that that is not necessarily true anymore, that the federal government under the Trump administration is utilizing all assets and all agencies and all staff that they can to carry out immigration enforcement and deportations. The U.S. Military, ICE, Homeland Security, we're hearing, for example, that the Joint Terrorism Task Force is also potentially going to be empowered to engage in immigration enforcement. And so we do have to be very thoughtful as the port. It is port policy passed back in 2018 that we, as port staff, do not engage beyond where we are required to by federal law in immigration enforcement in any way. And so really understanding that changing landscape is incredibly important to us. We do rely on federal staff here at the airport, Customs and Border Protection, to vet people coming into the country through our international arrivals facility. And those CBP officers, their job is to make sure that people have the proper paperwork, that they are not bringing anything into the country they should not. But certainly, in the first Trump administration, we did see what I would consider to be increased specificity around whether people have all of their documents in order and whether or not they should be allowed into the country. So maybe like, "Oh, close enough, you know, we know you're here for tourism, feel free to come in." Might have happened in other administrations. Under the Trump administration, it's, "You seem to be missing a comma here. I'm sorry, we're going to have to send you back." And I'm not saying that is a good thing or a bad thing. People have their different views on that, but I do think we can expect increased enforcement and increased numbers of people turned away from our international arrivals facility for not having every single piece of paperwork lined up in exactly the same way. Similarly, of course, we have federal staff throughout the airport, many of whom work for Homeland Security, TSA and CBP being the majority of those. They do not technically have responsibility to walk around the airport or walk around outside the airport and ask people for their documentation, but it is not illegal for them to do so. So again, we need to be monitoring this and make sure that we understand not only what is happening, but also that every single person who works at the airport, the 22,000 people who work at the airport, whether they work directly for us or whether they work for one of our tenants or vendors, understand what their rights are, potentially making sure that they are connected to education to know their rights. There was just a story today in the newspaper that the Trump administration has targeted Chicago for a major deportation effort, and they are not having as much success deporting people as they thought, because, as Tom Homan, the ICE czar, said, "Too many people know their rights." So it is actually something that can make a pretty big difference, to help people understand when somebody comes up to you and asks you for your immigration documentation, what your rights are. And I think we can definitely play a role there. So it is a changing landscape. It's an incredibly aggressive landscape. That is not something that port staff engage in directly in terms of immigration enforcement, but we are looking very closely at ways that we can support our workforce, support the people who work at and around our aviation and maritime facilities.
You know, as you know, many, many months ago, I asked for a plan or a review of the funding that we may see to lose as a result of this new administration. And I want to clarify for the public and confirm that when we go through our capital budgets processing, process of planning, we do not account for or depend on or assume that we will be receiving federal funding. Is that accurate?
Steve?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. So although there is a huge opportunity cost for us if we were not to receive federal funding, as far as the commitments that we've made as a port to the infrastructure and the building out of our facilities, that is assumed to be moving forward with or without federal funding.
That's Executive Director Metrick nodding right there, yes.
Yeah, and of course, it does. Of course, that impacts if we have to expend the full funds, if we don't get those opportunities or those federal funds, it may impact the time or the amount of projects in the future as we go, but we manage that.
And Commissioner, if I can just add really briefly, certainly, there are a number of reasons why we would not get as many federal funds as we have in the past, and some of those are changing priorities from the administration. Some of those might be new restrictions on organizations that have DEI programs or organizations that are in a sanctuary city or in a sanctuary state. That having been said, we are full steam ahead as staff, continuing to apply for federal funds. If we can get federal funds, we want them, obviously not with strings attached that we don't feel comfortable with, but we do still believe that even with all of these federal changes, that there will be opportunities for us to continue to receive federal dollars, at least right now.
Yeah, and you know, I think there's an important distinction here between formulaic funding and discretionary funding, and obviously, discretionary funding may trickle to a halt, but for the most part, I hope the formulaic funding will stay in place. So we'll see what happens.
We will see what happens.
Commissioner Mohammed?
Um, no particular questions, but I did just want to take a minute to thank Eric and also Director Gazar, who recently held a meeting with our immigration-focused organizations to discuss questions that they had, to address the potential impacts of this new administration's proposed deportation plans. And that meeting, I participated in, and it was really focused on how the Port of Seattle will collaborate with community organizations and provide accurate information. I think the most important thing we could do during this time is combat misinformation, and one of the best ways we can do that is just to ensure that we have regional coordination. And I think the other thing that I would want to underscore for the public is that the Port of Seattle or the Commission does not interfere with any sort of judicial order or federal enforcement that are taking place, but that we do remain committed to fostering a regional cooperation, and will continue to work with our immigration-led organization to provide clarity, resources, know-your-rights information, and support them as communities are impacted. And ultimately, that helps us build trust and get accurate information out. I think that will be the most important thing we can do as an organization and are responsible to do that. And so just want to thank Eric and Director Gazar for engaging with that, those organizations, and being a part of those regional tables to discuss how to get ahead of some of the misinformation that will be out in community. Thank you.
Any response to that, Eric?
Absolutely. Happy to continue to work with you and everybody at the port to do the best we can to follow our values and support our community.
I was reflecting in November on the year ahead, and one of the really important themes that I kept returning to is this idea that one aspect of American democracy that makes us truly unique among democracies is that we are a federal system, where so much of the real functioning of government happens at the local and state level. And that can be frustrating when you're in D.C. and in power. It can also be empowering when you don't necessarily agree with the administration. But I think it also adds a responsibility to local governments like the Port of Seattle, where, you know, in a time when it feels like there's so much chaos and the dysfunction of government may be, in fact, part of the plan, it's up to us to show that government can still work for folks in their communities and for the basic services they need. And so I think we all have a responsibility to ensure that regardless of what happens out of D.C., that here in our communities, we're going to work to make government work for our communities. And that is a sort of rear guard that we need to play in a challenging moment, particularly for the most vulnerable. It feels like so much of this stuff is punching down, and we need to be willing to say we're going to advocate for folks who may not have their own voice or may not have their own power, whether those are immigrants or transgender folks or minority communities or the economically disenfranchised. It's really important for those of us that do still wield some power to be able to say we're going to push back against chaos and injustice. And it sounds like a Marvel speech, but it's really sincerely true in these moments. And Eric, I know, I think you and I spoke about this too. In some ways, this feels like getting back on a bike after a while. This was the milieu into which I first became a Commissioner, and so I kind of feel like I'm getting back into the habit of playing that role. At the same time, I do think, you know, that we will return to some normal sense of order, even coming out of the federal government relatively soon, as this is exhausting, even for the folks who may believe in the larger agenda, but they just want to, you know, if you're a new cabinet secretary, you do actually want your department to succeed. And so eventually, I'm hoping that many of these agencies with whom we work will get back to a sort of normal course of operations and will be able to pick up where we left off. So I know this is very disruptive and scary for a lot of people, but we're going to continue to try to work through this and make progress, even maybe if we're facing more significant headwinds than normal. So thank you for the presentation. Steve, I'm going to ask you one more time if there's anything else you want to add on this topic.
I think a good note to end on is that we'll continue to take actions as we look at this through our lens of our values to do that, and also continuing to look for how we can support our community as well in doing that, and continue to look for both the opportunities. There's challenges, but there's also opportunities within this too for us as well, so.
Indeed. Okay. Well, thank you again, Eric. That concludes our business meeting agenda for the day. Are there any closing comments at this time or motions relating to committee referrals from Commissioners? Commissioner Mohammed or Cho?
Happy to provide my closing comments, if that's okay.
Please do, yeah.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank Tyler, who worked on the motion today that was introduced earlier. I didn't get an opportunity to thank him and other staff who worked on it. It was unfortunate that the motion didn't pass, but I just wanted to say I appreciate the time and effort that went into helping draft it. Thank you for the time and appreciate it.
The only closing comment I had was just a little moment of joy. I showed up to my daughter's first softball skills camp of the season, and lo and behold, it was Aaron Pritchard coaching. I'd heard about this, like, Svengali figure in Seattle softball, who is famed for just being an amazing coach for the girls. And so as my daughter has now aged into this, it was such a pleasure to walk in and see Aaron's smiling face there. And when Jane came back from practice, she was so excited about softball season. So thank you, Aaron, for being a great member of your community, too.
Our dynamic.
I walked in, and he said, "Hey, my boss is here." And all these other people in the room are like, "You're his boss?" And I was like, "Well, sort of, but not really." But anyway, it was a wonderful moment. So thank you, Aaron, for giving in that way to your community. Executive Director Metrick, any closing comments?
No. Not softball-related. Not softball-related.
Great. Okay. Hearing no further comments and having no further business, if there is no objection, we are adjourned at 2:21.